You're leaving everyone and welcome to the January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBA present here this evening, myself Chairman Alan Donnelly, Vice Chairman Mr. Carl Hinger is here with us this night. Our Secretary, Ms. Janet LaForja, is here with us this evening. Regular member Commissioner Mr. Richard Briggs should be here very shortly. Regular Member Commissioner Mr. Elijah Herling is here with us this evening. And Ultimate Member Commissioner Mr. Larry Rushmeyer is with us this evening. Mr. Fran Lally is gonna be bebopping in and out this evening, was here earlier, but he's gonna be buff in and out. And absent this evening is our Recording Secretary, Ms. Cassandra Varian. All right. The current agenda can be found here at the table or on the town website under Board Meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the Secretary will read into the record any communications we've received in favor or opposed to the application. The Chair will then entertain questions of clarification from Board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we've gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of the meeting and will deliberate an open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the Board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You're welcome to stay to the end of the meeting or contact the Land Use Office in the morning. Thank you very much. Okay, first thing on the agenda is the review of the November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes of the meeting. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I had one tiny thing of real time.
I'm good.
Now, Secretary?
Oh, I'm, I don't find any, um, what was the question Chairman? I'm sorry.
Oh, the November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes. Do you have any amendments or anything that needs tweaking at all on that?
No.
Okay. I had one little thing on line sixty-nine. I didn't see the hardships on there, and I know the hardships were the steep.
Well, the hardships on sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Which one have Commissioner?
The hardship.
All right, we also said septic on that.
Okay.
This hardship was the topography and the septic. So I'd like to amend that if possible, just add septic.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. And a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Go a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on, public hearings. So we're gonna start with our first public hearing this evening. It is Z dash twenty-three dash sixty-five. That is Dominic Ferens, Residence. I hope I said your name right, sir.
Yep.
And that is for a, to build a shed, and that is required dimension of fifty feet, proposed dimension of ten, so you're looking for a variance for forty feet, and that is zoning regulation three dot five. Could the owner please come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Just point of order, we probably need to seat Larry.
He, he, he is seated, isn't he?
Move the seat, Mr. Larry Rushmeyer.
No, you, we don't need to vote, you just, you just choose.
There, you're seated, sir. Thank you. Thanks, John. Okay. Uh, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
So it's Dominic Ferens, twenty-eight Whiskinear Road.
Welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Ferens.
Thank you. Um, I was just looking to put a shed. There's already a pre-existing slab type structure there, so I was just hoping to put something right on top of it, since it's already there. Um, I can't really go into the property more because it'd be kind of the center, it's a very narrow property, so to get the fifty-foot clearance would kind of put it almost center of the property. There is septic there, I didn't think of that. And, yeah.
Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, to my knowledge.
All right. Thank you very, very much. Madam Secretary, was there any, we didn't have any board ones, is any board ones there?
No, no correspondence in favor or in opposition.
Uh, do any members have any questions for the applicant?
Do you have any idea how, the size of the septic system?
Size-wise?
Yep, um, roughly thirty by eighty?
Yes. Um, I know it spans majority of the whole property line, it almost goes from shed to about fifteen feet off the line. I think I just had some, somebody, uh, showed me the plans recently, and I go, I know it goes to the trees towards the center of the property as well. If there's a map, I can kind of point it out if that helps.
Would it help if I brought it up on the GIS, sir?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay. Give me a minute, second. See if we get this baby working. Where's the button? Come on, buddy.
It's good though. It's big.
It comes on, I got your GIS, sir. I had it working before. Where is the button? There it is.
There you go.
Show me GIS. Okay. Uh, do you want me to move my mouse over?
Uh, I could kind of describe it. So that's where kind of a pre-existing fence was, towards, right underneath twenty-eight.
Okay.
So it's actually probably exactly right where that lettering is.
Okay. Going like this or like this?
It goes down, uh, to the right.
So like this way?
Nope, uh, towards the house more.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's like a diagonal from the AC towards the property line to the right, towards the back shed, or the back deck, I'm sorry. Yeah, it is probably about eighty, ninety feet.
Goes over that?
Yes, sir. It goes on an angle like that, and then it goes parallel with the house and the deck.
All right, so likely that, but ninety feet roughly coming up from where that eight is?
Yeah. And, and it's probably described, so yeah, it goes like an angle this way, and then it goes straight.
Okay.
So it's like an obtuse.
And beyond that, the, what was proposed fence there, what, what's back there?
Uh, the fence isn't there anymore. Uh, what's back there is just land. Yeah, it's kind of a steep drop out.
And that's all part of your property?
Yes, sir.
What are the, uh, two other structures that are?
Those are the existing sheds.
Okay, they were there when you?
Yeah, they were there.
Property?
Yeah, so that was there, and like I said, that, so that L right there, that's the slab. So that's roughly sixteen by twenty-three.
And that's where the, is it a small tractor or something that's over there? You have something?
Yes, yeah, the lawnmower there, yeah.
Oh, it's a lawnmower.
Yeah, it's a lawnmower.
That's what the shed's for.
Yes. Those are like, I don't know why that was there, but I was like, I guess I could try and make it look decent and put something on top of it, because it's kind of just broken concrete, so I figured I'd make it look a little nicer.
So, uh, the, the GIS, I just wanna verify, it's, uh, the width of your property is about like one thirty-five-ish, so it's very narrow, very long property.
Yeah, so it's on the fifty feet would get me right in the center of, uh, the property for the shed.
Yeah, so it's, it's a bit narrow for the, uh, expected setbacks for what would be a normally an R eighty property, it would normally be a lot wider.
Okay. But he's got the depth.
He, he does, yeah, well, he has a depth, but.
He's got plenty of depth.
I mean, if you need a fifty foot on each side, that really only.
Put it in the middle right in the backyard.
That's fair.
One for the person over there?
Mr. Briggs, I'm sorry, my, my, I have a need.
Oh, sure, no problem. Note for the record, Commissioner Briggs is here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs.
Any follow-up questions on that? Commissioner Hill, any follow-up questions?
No, sir. I got a chance to see it.
So, um, so let me understand, the shed, the?
There's two sheds on the property right now.
There's two sheds, those are?
That's what the two, those two blue are.
Okay.
And then there's a concrete slab where that L is where the mouse is right now, which is, like you said, pre-existing, so he wants to put the shed on that concrete slab as it exists now.
And your, and the remaining, those, the existing ones, is still gonna be there?
Yeah, I, I wasn't gonna turn them down or anything. Yeah.
Okay, you guys. Okay.
Any other questions, members?
And the, the property does slope, so where that pre-existing fence was, it kind of goes downhill after that, so just.
I have a couple of questions for you, sir. Thank you very much for allowing me to go out to the liberty of properties. Uh, so I did check with the zoning office, no, sir, I had a feeling it was, but your lot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Um, it's an R eighty zone, you have seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and eight square feet, give or take. So technically, the lot itself is a pre-existing non-conforming. What was the size of that shed again, sir?
Uh, I believe it was sixteen by twelve, if I'm not mistaken.
Sixteen by twelve. And your proposal was to bring it, basically put it on that slab?
Yes, sir.
That was out there. Um, I drew a little map of your property, um, so I'm just gonna have you come forward and just verify a couple of things. So as I went out and looked at the property, I looked at that existing slab there, I don't know, it was fifty-plus years old, there was stone in it and concrete and stuff like that. Yeah, that is to the, it's to the right, or towards the main Whiskinear Road of that. So you wanted to set it on the existing one right there?
Yes.
Um, this is tree lines and stuff here that I saw. Um, I did some rough measurements from roughly where the border was, which I think was the rock wall, there wasn't any pans.
Yeah, there's the rock wall, and then it came to the fence, and then it came to the slab.
Right. Um, question, is it possible, and you told me, but, and this is kind of going to what Commissioner Rushmeyer's question was, is it possible to have a, a little bit more centered, you know, I don't know the use or anything on the garage, but, uh, maybe have it a little bit closer to off the driveway or, or back in this area? I know you have the septic that's out over in here that you just went over, starting like from the twenty-eight and going down. But just throwing the idea out, is it possible to locate it somewhere in here and it would be, you know, maybe it's a twenty-foot variance or something?
Yeah, so unfortunately, right where the corner is, where your mouse is exactly?
Yeah.
There's a pipe that comes out of the ground that gets it to water. I'm not sure if it comes from the?
Drainage?
Yeah, sub-pump underneath, and then if you go on the opposite side of the fence, if you scroll down a little bit, that, that's where drainage comes out as well. So I have two water lines actually dump into that area, which makes it wet.
Okay.
So I think that would not be too good for the shed, if it just starts pouring water on it, because it does it year-round.
I got you.
That's why I think it comes from the sub-pump downstairs.
I got you. Um, one thing I didn't notice about this is, it's, I mean, these are here, they were pre-existing non-conformings. Another thing that I didn't notice is, um, I did a little checking, and there was one other prior variance on your property.
Yes.
I, I think it, one second, and I have it. Uh, May fifth, May third, two thousand and twenty-one, application Z twenty-one fifty-three, there was a variance, you had a pre-existing guesthouse, I guess?
Yes, it's the top right there.
Okay, and they turned it into an apartment?
Correct.
Right, and the hardships on that were health and safety and to put it a little bit more in a conformity, does that sound familiar?
I think so.
And watch the meeting. Okay. All right, so you do have one variance existing already on the property. So you don't think it's possible, uh, to get it a little bit off that border line there?
Not without hitting the wetland or the septic field that's there.
Okay. That was, that was pretty much the questions.
There, there's no wetlands, it's just wet because of the discharge?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Any questions, Commissioner? Well, you may have covered this before I came in, I thought. So that line?
He has a existing, kind of a slab foundation, slab and stone foundation right here where he wants to put it, right about where that mouse is.
This line, what does that represent?
Uh, fence that is kind of there but not there, only half of it's there.
And the, uh, the wetland area is?
And there's no?
Where it discharges, he's correct, it's not wetland.
Oh, you're talking about where it discharges is back off in?
Yeah, that whole corner, basically.
Like where this L is in this corner?
Yes, sir. On the inside of the L and the outside is where, uh, the drainage for the house and the sub-pump.
So I'm not clear, what would, what would be in the way of moving it more centrally in the property?
Um, well, he has septic from this twenty-eight here, do you want to explain that one more time, sir?
Yeah, so from, almost from the twenty-eight on a diagonal towards the back deck. It, it kind of, it's a weird angle.
You said it was eighty, ninety feet?
Yeah, at least.
Running across this way?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it comes up, and then you said there's, there's septic fields like back in here or something?
Yes, sir.
How many bedrooms is the property?
So it's, so my house is four, and then they counted the guest one, so it's a five-bedroom septic, five or six, I'd have to look.
So anything that's back over here might possibly be used as a reserve if you ever had to add on, but the fields are here, does that make sense there? He's gonna?
They're big, they're big fields, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, those are big, big fields.
Well, it's probably a designated reserve area?
Well, if he's got fields there already and never needs to add on, I don't think he's gonna go closer to the house, he probably would go this way. I'm not a septic expert, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I was just thinking, okay, I mean, I know you have this here, it's useful, you already have the, the foundation there, I understand that part of it, sir. I'm just, just trying to bring in a little bit more.
What about on the, on the inside of the other shed?
They're pretty close together.
I mean, this, this way?
Oh, like over here?
Yeah.
Like in front of the shed?
Yeah, I mean, if there were, yeah.
Uh, you'd be blocking the front of those existing sheds.
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
Yeah, I think, aren't the doors like on this side?
Yeah, they're on this side and it's pretty tight together.
Yeah, the doors on that side. Yeah, I was just, uh, I don't know, to try to get a little bit more in, in over here, and maybe it's twenty feet he needs and not forty. Um, but that was, that was my question.
Again, the, the issue with further, uh, down your property is?
So that's, uh, more of a hill, it kind of?
You, you wouldn't happen to know what grade it is?
No, unfortunately not. So the, the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so towards the top of the property, it's more of a consistent hill, and then towards the center, it's a more of a drop-off. And then I do know where the green is. I wouldn't consider it wetlands, but it does get very damp back there.
It gets damp there?
Yeah.
Your property's almost, it's a hair under two football fields, it's like, you're looking at football fields, but there is some slopage back over there, I didn't really pay that much attention. Yeah, back over here. Uh, this was relatively?
That was relatively flat. It's right after that second shed is when it kind of starts to go down.
Right about here and then?
Yes, sir.
You could set two piers on the backside of the shed and let the front of the shed, the opening, be at the top of the slope, and it would be perfectly fine.
Are you talking, uh, like here?
If you're saying that the backyard slopes off?
Yeah.
And put the front, the, the door of the shed at the top of the slope, put two piers on the backside of the, the shed, and so, and let the back of the shed be off the ground.
Oh, and you're?
Levitating?
And you're thinking split the difference on the one thirty-five or whatever.
Absolutely, you could put it right in the middle and it wouldn't need a variance.
Yeah, right. And you put it right here.
That's right.
Okay. Do any other members have any other questions?
The existing ones, do you have, do you have equipment in there?
We do, yes. So it was actually a bunch of, uh, just lawn tools and things like that, just everyday stuff.
Sixteen by twelve, that's a good shed.
Yeah, so I think, uh, the, it's less than two hundred square feet, I think that's what it was.
What is the condition of this slab you want to put the shed on? Is it like?
It's rough, it's very like jagged, and like, that's why I kind of want to cover it.
But it's fair, I remember it being fairly level, although it had dirt, had dirt and weeds on it.
Yes, it was level, yeah.
Right, but it's not like, it's not like cracked or anything, wouldn't mean redo this.
No, 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 it wouldn't have to be done, just filled right on top of it. Yes, sir.
So the, the, the proposed doesn't fit on that?
Yes, so it would fit right on it.
It's right, right about there, as soon as mouse is, that's where it comes over.
Yeah.
I think I measured that.
Yeah.
One second.
So I think you measured?
That slab is sixteen by twenty-three, so I took my dead measure out, it's sixteen depth by twenty-three long, and it's pretty much a rectangle. I mean, it had dirt and weeds and stuff on it, but I could see the boulders, I could see the concrete. It's there. But there was probably, there was some other structure at one time on it.
Yes, you could argue that's already a variance, or a non-conforming structure.
There's something there already.
Do you have any other questions for the office, sir? Any other questions, members? Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask if there's anybody here that would like to speak in favor of the application. Hearing none. At this time, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. Uh, sir, you have the final remarks, whatever you'd like to say.
Well, I would really appreciate it, put it in the spot, only because it's there, and I would just like to cover it up, otherwise I would kind of have really no use for that slab. Um, it would really help out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. This time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash twenty-three dash sixty-five. Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next application, and Commissioner Briggs, well, this one, sir, um, is application Z dash twenty-three dash seventy, and that is the Ryan Road, Dennis Residence, and that's a request for variance three dot four dot alpha dot three dot B, that is an accessory structure to the front yard. Could the applicant, or proponent of the applicant, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail.
Excellent. Um, Ryan Venus, one Dark Angelo Drive.
Welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals, sir.
Thank you. Um, I was before the zoning Board of Appeals in September, um, to put a pool, um, in my, well, they consider it my front yard because I have two front yards, um, based on the style of my property, um, and that was granted, um, so what I am trying to do, and I didn't know at the time, but my wife would like to add a pool house, small pool house, um, because she, you don't want to have kids walking through the, uh, the house with, with wet feet, so we're looking to put a structure, um, and, um, if we put the structure, you know, we're trying to figure out, and we're, you work with, uh, Mr. Lally here, should try to put it in the backyard, but with the septic back there and the variance, and I, I have a, um, and there's a conservation easement, there's just really no area to put it, um, plus it wouldn't be near the pool, so it'd kind of be counterintuitive to put a pool house away from a pool, so, uh, that's basically what I'm looking to do.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Madam Secretary, did we get any?
I have no, I have no.
I didn't see that.
Samali?
There's none. Okay. All right. Uh, just note for the record, the last application that, uh, variance for the pool was Z dash twenty-three dash forty-six, and that was at the September meeting. Okay, um, do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
What was the hardship?
Uh, so two front yards, um, because on, um, Dark Angelo's one front yard and Merlin Brook Road is the, the other front yard, so, um, to put the pool, um, or anything in the backyard wouldn't work because of the se- setbacks plus the septic and the conserv- uh, conservation easement. Um, on the other, on the west side of the property, my driveway and my well is there, so there's really not, not a spot, so that's why I got it approved the first time, and, and I'm just looking to add the building, uh, this time, it's, it's a smaller structure.
Any other commissioners have questions?
The size, what are you looking for?
Um, so it's gonna be, I can show you the plans, um, it's going to be, uh, sixteen by ten is gonna be the closed piece, and then there's gonna be like a, a overhang so the kids can be underneath, it would be ten by sixteen as well, so twenty by sixteen as well.
And then the reason this wasn't on the first application is just, you, uh, didn't know that, your, your wife wanted it, or you forgot that?
It was that, and it was also after, you know, once we put it in, EJ was handling it, and then they're not doing the pool house, so I said, oh, I'll have to go in and do it after, so, but yeah, it was after, uh, it was after we put in the whole application the first time.
Okay. So the total footprint is twenty by sixteen?
Yes, sir.
Um, I have, it's, it's easier to pull it up on the app, but is it okay if I pull the property up on Google Earth, sir?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, all right, and I drew a map, like I always do. Thank you very much for allowing me to go out to your house.
Thank you for coming.
Um, first thing I wanted to do, if I could, is just review the map. Um, come on forward, and I happened to pull my map from the old one because I already had my notes on it, so I just kind of added to it. Uh, so the septic fields are over here.
Yeah, facing Dark Angelo.
Yeah, the L-shaped pool is there, the driveway goes up over there, and it's, uh, it's not a great drawing, but this little box I drew in there is roughly where the pool house is supposed to be.
Yes.
Okay. Um, on the front side of the property, or on the driveway part, if you look at the Google Earth, it's kind of like a common drive. Oh, that's your house right there, right, sir?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so this is a common drive, but you have a driveway easement that's on this side right here, right? And then this whole backside of your property, that's a conservation easement?
Yes, sir.
All right, and you have two front yards, obviously, because Merlin Brook and Dark Angelo.
Yes, sir.
The septic fields, um, all right, there's the house, can you point it out on the Google Earth for me, sir?
Uh, the septic field?
Yeah. The house is there.
Right here.
Okay. All right, I got that. I think that's pretty much it for my questions, it was, yeah, it was just on really what the hardships were. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any, does any of you, any other questions? Do you have any other questions?
No, I just find this map a little convoluted, but?
Does this one make sense? That's his pool, and then that little square is the shed. I should've drawn it right in the frame. So there's the pool, and then the shed he's proposing is right there. And that's his septic fields and stuff, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, sir?
No.
No, sir.
Okay.
I think it looks very nice.
Thank you.
The plan.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I tried to pull it up on the Google Earth on this, but your, your road is not on the Google Earth, and that, but I can find it on the app, it's weird.
Yeah, sometimes it's hard to give people deliver things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Please come forward, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Uh, Scott Montanero, sixty-two Merlin Brook Road.
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals, sir.
Well, I haven't ever met you before since you moved in, so I'm your next neighbor.
Nice to meet you.
So...
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals, sir.
Thank you. So, um, I like that Ryan has done a lot of amazing things with his property. He's maintaining it like the previous owners did, but there are a numerous amount of issues that now are becoming an amalgam of issues as this complex has started to build slowly. Um, I knew that he was going to build a pool, or at least had the foresight to build a pool. Um, I had invited his stone contractors over to my house to give me a couple of estimates for work myself. Um, two fairly young gentlemen, um, seemed to know what they were talking about. I didn't go with them because their estimate was crazy, so I'm sorry about that, but, um, what I found since this all began was the first phase was a woodshed that sits, a massive woodshed. I don't know the dimensions, because I, I haven't inquired. It's so large that, one, it gives me a little bit of privacy, which is not a bad thing, but it's so big that the first thing I thought of is, does it require a permit? Does it require town approval? Um, and I learned more just sitting here, listening to this gentleman, uh, he was proposing to the tenant. So, that was phase one. Um, phase two was a, oh, literally a wall of firewood that is shocking to me. I would assume it's shocking to the Dark Angels who, uh, bought his property in the back. Moving forward, um, the reason why I asked for the stone masons to come visit because I needed some stonework, and I wanted to do some more stone on the front of my house and on the side of the back.
My friend will up to you real quick. Which house is yours, sir?
Sixty-two Merlin Brook.
Could you point it out on here for me?
Yeah, I think I can do that. So, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, great. Kinda behind.
Yeah, so I'm at, this is the cul-de-sac, this is Ryan, this is me, and this, this is the, uh, the green belt.
I can try to bring it up on the big screen.
Trying to look, isn't that?
I'll try to, I'll try to pull, keep going, sir.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Your address one more time?
Sixty-two Merlin Brook.
Merlin, okay, you got it. I'll pull it up right now.
Um, so, um, when I asked what the gentleman were building, they told me they were building a fairly massive outdoor fireplace that is, I don't know the measurements, Ryan, but I'm assuming two stories, at least high, and I thought, is there a permit required to build such a massive fireplace structure? It's beautiful from a distance, so, uh, but my problem with the fireplace is that smoke, when it's being used, enters my house. That's a major issue. I see the complexity of what you're trying to build, and especially with a young family and everything else, so I'm all for that. I raised my son here, I get it, and I appreciate that. The fireplace is billowing smoke into my house, and I'm being told other neighbors are having issues with this as well. We live at a higher elevation in town. Most people, when they drive up Merlin Brook Road, they don't really understand how, how high the elevation is actually there. When you're looking across Lillinona, we're looking at the ridge from my house of the Maywood Estate in Bridgewater, so it's quite high. But we have a weird vortex of wind. Um, and I, I've shared, you know, trying to clear leaves off my property is a nightmare.
That's your house right there, sir, right?
Yeah, 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 it is.
I can try to bring it up on Google Earth.
No, 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 that's perfectly fine. So, that, that's structure you're having your mouse on now, the pointer is my garage with a, um, uh, room above, and then the main house, and my patio is that half moon in the back.
And here's the red damask aspect.
Right, so, right on the green belt, um, that was, I guess, given to the town when Mr. Dark Angelo was looking to create this multi-family compound, if you will. It never really turned out to be exactly like that, but close. That's the last time I ever came to one of these meetings. It's many years ago. Um, fast forward, going back to the situation, the shed, i-is there a, is there a zoning rule, a regulation for setback? How close to a border something can be?
Yes, sir. Yeah, if the zoning enforcement officer is here, we go over it exactly.
So, my question is to all of you and to Ryan indirectly, um, is, is there a, in lieu of building this whole compound of entertainment?
It's gotta be fifty.
For the family, which is, again, great, but...
You're R eighty, sir? That's R eighty right there?
Yeah.
So it's fifty feet?
So that sits, if I'm correct, there's maybe ten or twelve feet that divides my property line and that shed. That shed sits right on the tree line.
Okay. Regulation three dot, three dot five in R eighty is fifty feet, sir.
Okay, so, I don't know, I never received the letter to say, hey, by the way, your next door neighbor's building a very big woodshed. I, I didn't see it. Behind that woodshed, since it was built, um, again, Ryan, I don't mean to offend you in any way, but it's become storage for garbage. It's ladders, it's stuff that's been, I have photographs of it, Ryan, from day one, it's there. If you want me to help you, I can help you with that. Um, again, this is nothing, this is nothing personal. But, that is now the pool, the great wall of wood in the back fuels the woodshed, which fuels the fireplace, which is billowing smoke into my house. Now, I have a fireplace in my master bedroom, I have a fireplace in my living room, it smells like the fireplaces are beyond burning or backing up. That's how smoking my house gets. I waited, I didn't wanna say anything, I was trying to figure out, you know, I don't want conflict, um, it, it's, it's not my style. But, you know, now that I saw the pool come in, had I known there was a pool house being put in, I would've come to that meeting. I, I didn't object. I got the letter appropriately from Nijames. I actually refused it because I didn't know why Nijames was sending me a certified letter. It made no sense to me, and I was running out to go to New York.
You mean the original pool, this is probably what it was?
The original pool, so, and quite honestly, I thought, if he's building a pool, that's a good thing, especially when you have children. I, I didn't build one because, and I tried, I had estimates, I didn't do it when my son was little because I wasn't around enough to even maintain the damn thing. So, um, had I known there was gonna be another structure, I would've been at that meeting. I think I would've had a different, a different viewpoint.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, what, another structure are you talking about?
The pool house. Now, that is an afterthought, in my opinion, should've been raised. You're building a pretty large pool, which, the machinery, this giant cranes are still out there, the hammering of rock going on for weeks. Didn't really bother me, to be honest, except when I'm on the phone for a meeting, or my wife is, um, but you live, you live there, you know, he's welcome to do it, I know he was building a pool. But at a certain point, you got a fireplace, you got woodsheds that are sitting on the border, you got a fireplace not just coming into my house. If you walked in my house when that outdoor fireplace is on, you would swear that we have a fire going with crosswinds that's billowing down. And it's actually, on some days, we've smelled it on the second floor, which is where all the four bedrooms are. So, it, it's, it's an amalgam of this whole project that's becoming overly complex, in my opinion, overly developed. And do you have to put in a fireplace with zoning regulations? Does the chimney have to be X amount of feet tall?
When the house was built, as far as I know, they have to have permits and has to be inspected.
No, the fireplace was built after, after Ryan moved in. No, actually, I think the previous owner, the hookers, I remember them extending their main chimney inside the house because of the weird winds. We put on, you know, uh, I forgot the name of the caps that we put on ours that actually closed with a, you know, just to make sure there's no crosswind or anything like that. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'm opposed to it, um, because it's an impact to me. I will say one other thing. Since that pool went in, in my opinion, something has changed with the drainage. Because during the recent heavy rain that we've had, my property is flooded. I know the kind of rock, uh, that he has under that house, because that foundation was, from what I remember them telling me, it was a nightmare to be installed. Uh, it was a challenge to build. Um, but, um, so now I've got a drainage issue. I mean, there was ponding in my property, so, and I don't know geologically what the, the odds of that happening. Some of the rain we've had since that pool went in has been a little bit crazy, we can all admit. But I'm here, you know, close to twenty-five years, and I've, I've not seen that. So, having said that, I think we have a lot of complex issues with this entire project, because it, it's been done piece by piece. I know when the fireplace went in, um, his masons had told me, yeah, yeah, he's gonna be building patios and a pool, and it was meaningless to me at the time. But the fireplace, the woodshed, i-it's becoming, it's becoming a problem. I think smoke coming into somebody's house, um, again, I'm not a doctor, I do all the things for a living, but is that a health hazard to me or my neighbors? I know I'm not the first person to complain here, so, um, you know, I, I don't know, um, what the structure looks like that Ryan's trying to build, maybe he can share that with me, I don't know.
Do you mind if I ask you a follow-up question, sir?
Yeah.
Have you brought any of your questions or concerns to the attention of the CEO, Mr. Lally?
No. Um, I spoke with him today to find out if the, um, um, if the meeting was still gonna happen, and he said yes. And I asked him, do you need permits or are there setback rules? He said yes. Um, he doesn't recall seeing a permit for the woodshed, nor does he recall seeing one for the outdoor fireplace. He was aware of smoke affecting other residents, and mentioned the health department as well. So, but other than that, you know, um, listen, I live here a long time. You know, I'm all for people having a happy family life, I certainly have one. Um, my son is out of the house now, as you and I discussed when I came in to say hello. Um, but, yeah, I think this is becoming a seriously complex project, and, again, I have a level of appreciation, but, you know, it depends. Also, I, do we know where the mechanicals are for the pool?
I'm sorry?
The mechanicals for the pool?
He's on the plans.
Questions have to be through the chair, sir.
Okay, so I, I'm just, I don't even know where the mechanicals are, um, because that's also an issue of noise. If there's gonna be more outdoor activity, more fireplace activity, so, um, you know, I don't know if there's anybody else who's not in favor, but I felt compelled to, to raise my voice.
Thank you, sir. Do any members have any follow-up questions for this thing?
No, no questions. Just to clarify, I guess that, that our sole task at the moment is to address the, the pool house. These other questions are important, and I guess we, we're not in a position to say or know whether there are permits for the shed or for the, um, the fireplace, which would be a separate consideration, so...
Yeah, I just consider it to be part of the whole development of this pool complex, and that's the reason why I raised it. Um, only because some of the issues are issues. There, I mean, there's, um, you know, I, I can appreciate having all these nice things, but, um, if they're affecting me, they're affecting me, so...
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Oh, of course.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Redennis, would you like to respond, sir?
I would. Um, the first thing I'd like to mention is, one of my neighbors had told me, um, there was positive correspondence. Did you not receive that today? Okay.
A brand-new correspondence? Yeah, I don't, um, Secretary, I didn't get anything last night. We did not get any last night, sorry.
Okay. Um, secondly, um, I, I don't think, um, I, I wish the gentleman came to me to talk to me about some of the things. I can clean, um, the items beyond the shed up. Um, the shed, I can show you on the map, is well beyond fifty feet. Um, and my, um, the chimney is, uh, there's, there's no need for, for a permit for an outdoor chimney. Um, I've used the chimney three times this year. I do have a wood burning insert in my, um, and I burn constantly. That's a problem, I'm sorry, but that's within my rule, my, my rights to burn a wood burning insert. I have a permit on town with that. Um, and I burn that constantly. That might be the smoke that you're having in your house, um, but I don't, you know, unfortunately, my kids in sports and stuff, I really only use the outdoor chimney maybe three or four times this year, it hasn't been a lot. Um, the reason why the chimney is so tall is because of, of that reason, right? So, we wanted to make sure, if people had windows open, it would go above the roof line, so that's the reason why it's tall.
And the wind sometimes can be tricky, and that is...
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course. Of course, and, and I understand that, but it meets, the chimney patio, the stone patio meet all the setbacks, that, you know, there wasn't, there's not a need for a, a permit, from, from what I understand. From my, my contractors, so...
Thank you very much.
May I?
Absolutely, sir.
Uh, yeah.
State your name and address again for the record.
Sixty-two Merlin Brook Road, Montanero is the name.
Mr. Montanero.
Um, you have a fifty-foot setback for the shed?
That's probably a...
From the border?
Well, that's the regulation.
Your questions need to be the chair, not...
Yeah, no, no, I've...
Yes, sir.
There's a fifty foot?
Yeah, regulation three dash, three dash five in R eighty is a fifty-foot side yard and rear yard.
So the one you're asking if there is one?
Oh, you're asking if there is one? That's a question for the zoning enforcement officer, sir.
Okay. So, yeah, there, it, it can't be, if it's sitting on the border of the, the trees, can't be fifty feet, because it, my, he's not into my, my property is not part of the, is not part of the greenway.
Yeah, that is something I would bring to the attention of the zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Lally, sir.
Okay.
Really something that's not before us here today, but I would bring that to his attention, sir.
Yeah, I'll speak to him tomorrow, maybe just, uh, just a quick measurement. If it's within spec, it's within spec, but it, I can't imagine it is, because I can see where the tags are, where the town marked green by.
Thank you, sir.
They've been in for a very long time since the project opened. Um, additionally, um, is he the person to, is Fran the person to ask about the, um, the outdoor fireplace zoning, the applications for permits or not?
Yes, sir. He is the zoning enforcement officer. He is the man to ask.
Okay, perfect. Personal, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
At this time, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone else that would like to speak in opposition. I have to do that before. Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Redennis, you have the final closing remarks, sir.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, this kinda got off task. Um, this is an account found. I moved in, I like to maintain my property. Um, I will clean behind that shed. If there's a problem with the shed, if there was a shed, there exists, there was, there was an existing structure is there before, previous owners there. Um, there is, um, you know, I have firewood on my property, many, many towns have firewood on their property. It abuts the bark Dark Angelo, there's no problems, then the, uh, some of them said, said, well, it was supported by last night. Um, I just want this to be focused on what I'm doing. It's a pool house, it's not, it's not the fireplace, it's not this. These are the first kinds I'm hearing of property complaints. I never once had a complaint from any of my neighbors. This is the first time I've heard. Now, this gentleman here was opposed to the development going on, from what I understand, and I, I understand it. You don't want people to develop their property, but they own their property with their zoning rights, you should be granted, you're, you should be granted. Now, this is a variance, obviously, there's a hardship here. Um, I think it should be considered based on the facts, in fact, the facts of other things that have gone on in the process.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Any last minute questions, sir? Any last minute questions?
In, in a, sorry, one other thing. Is there, is there a way to track, because my neighbor just said, he just sent something to the, uh, to, um, Ms. Curran?
To Amy, to Ms. Curran?
Yeah.
To check, Amy, you mean, right now?
No, she said that, he sent it today, he said, so...
Yeah, well, she didn't send it.
She didn't send it?
We would've, we would've received it if, uh, Amy would've, Ms. Curran would've sent it to me, and I would've printed it out, and I would've read it.
It was one of the same gentlemen that supported last night, sir.
Do you have a copy of the letter, sir?
I don't.
Oh, you don't? Okay. If you had it, we would, the secretary would read it into the record right now, but we'll, we'll take that into account that there is a, we believe it, sir.
Can I, is there a email sent to you, did you admit, or shortly sent, does that work, or, I mean, I don't think it's... I'm sorry, I may have missed.
It's okay. I think, I think we're all right. We, we trust your words, sir. If it's, it's on its way and it's going to Amy's office, we believe it. Any other questions? The shore, sir? Any questions, sir?
Nope.
Alright. This time, I would like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash twenty-three dash seventy, uh, Ryan and Dennis residence.
So...
Do I have a second? Oh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, so what we're gonna do now is, we're gonna go into closed deliberations, we kinda speak amongst ourselves, welcome to stay, and, and, and... Alright. I'd like to take a motion to approve application Z dash twenty-three dash sixty-five, Dominic Flores, Fran's residence. That's a request for variance three dash five, forty-foot structure to the right sideline, and that is a group of shade. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Given the size, uh, there are, uh, the pre-existing non-conforming two sheds over there, and, uh, concrete slant, it's already existed, combined with, uh, the septic, and, uh...
Possibly, we should, we might have to add one for that, if he ever has to. Possibly the septic might have to have off of that, if he ever has to.
Based on, I would have to pick it up there. It makes sense to, I think that, the fact that, especially that it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. There's already, the concrete slab is already there, so just adding something on top of it. And when I was looking, there's no, uh, the neighbors aren't gonna, you know, suffer for, uh.
View or anything like that? Yeah, he has some tree line there.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and you can't even throw, like we were saying, you can't even throw a football to the neighbors on that.
Yeah, forget it.
So for me, for me, I'm, I'm good with it.
I heard you sound okay, too.
Yes.
Mr. Rushmeyer?
Yeah, I, I think that to, to continue in the vein of giving a non-conforming, those were pre-existing structures. I just don't, there's plenty of room on the property to put the shed. There's no reason the shed couldn't be put with zero setbacks. So from that position, I, I, I don't see any need to even grant the variance.
Would you help if I brought it back up on the G I S?
No, no. I can see it from the map we have, but, I mean, I, I, I definitely agree with Larry in that there's not really a need for a variance. It does seem like there are options to place the shed, shed that aren't on the setbacks. But, I mean, I will admit, there are, in fact, some hardships, because the property is very oddly shaped, and, I, I mean, to his credit, there already is a, there, there already is a slab there, so it's, it, it is just putting a shed on an existing slab, and there is a hardship, a, a valid hardship, because the property is too narrow for what an R eighty should be. An R eighty should be at least two hundred feet wide, not a hundred and thirty.
You would think so, yeah, it's skinny. It's a property.
But there, there, but there is, yeah, there is a spot, and it isn't so narrow that you can't push at it, and there is a spot to put it, so I don't know.
The variance goes with the property, not the people. So, what he does with the shed is one thing, when the next person moves in and they, what they do to the shed, that's a whole nother thing, and it's on the property line, so.
I could agree with you.
Yeah, I, I could've gone either way on this. I understand what Commissioner Rushmeyer said. I believe that there are some other locations that you can get it either back, back towards the middle of the property and not need any variance at all, or another location somewhere over towards the front of the house, and maybe it's a fifteen or twenty-foot variance and not a forty-foot variance. I think it's possible to have another location. I understand the lot is a pre-existing non-conforming. I understand that there's basically an old slab there now, probably had an old shed or something like on it before. So, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Rushmeyer.
Do we have any other?
Yeah, anybody ready to vote?
Ready to vote?
Okay.
All right. All those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-three dash sixty-five, that's Dominic Friends Residence, and that is for a forty-foot variance, regulation three dot five, a shed in the yard. Say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, the motion fails, uh, four to one.
One to four?
One to four. One to four. Thank you very much, sir. Good evening.
Uh, can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Can I do anything with that slab?
We're in deliberations. Um, I will speak to Mr. Lawley after the morning, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, have a good evening. All right. Excellent. I'd like to take a motion to approve Z dash twenty-three dash seventy, that's the Ryan Redennis Residence, and that is for a variance for a, located in the front yard, and that is for a pool house, and that is three dot four dot alpha dot three dot B.
So moved?
Do I have a second? Okay, discussion.
This isn't relevant necessarily, but this seems to be an error in this. The required dimensions here are, say, thirty feet, and it's actually fifty. So, but that, but the, but the proposed dimensions don't impinge on that in any case, so this is not.
The big one is the front yard.
Yeah.
Three, four, alpha three, B.
I don't have a problem with this one either. There's.
The hardships, you see them?
Yeah, I mean, again, it's very similar to the same hardships that we gave for the pool. There's really not anywhere else, um, that I saw.
Two front yards, the two easements, the septic.
Right. You know, it's just, again, another of those unfortunate lots, that it's two, uh, two front yards. And on the, on the backside of the house where the, where the driveway is, I don't even think there's, even if you wanted to put it there, I don't think there's room, based on what I saw.
Yeah, 'cause the playground, I can just stuff it up, right? It's tiered.
Well, but also, it doesn't make any sense to put it anywhere else, because it's connected to the pool.
It's the pool.
It's a little bit like we're in for a dime, in for a dollar. I mean, we've already agreed to the pool idea, and the pool house is really kind of an extension of that, and makes the use of the pool, um, probably better, safer. So, um, it's, uh, it seems to be a little hard to argue against the pool house having, um, you know, approved the variance for the pool.
I concur.
I, I, I mean, in this instance, I think it's okay, because it does seem like a genuine oversight or mistake. I, I actually think, in general terms, they're already being an approval for a pool. They're kind of, almost goes against it, 'cause it kind of almost seems like, well, you gave me this, can you also give me this? And since you gave me that, can you also give me this? And I don't want, in February, to have another variance, saying, now that I have the pool house, can I now have?
I just, I forgot this.
In this case, it seems like a gen, it seems genuine, but if, it, I don't wanna see something like that become habitual or abused.
Also wanna add to the interpersonal dynamics within the family, so.
Right, right, but that's, right, but that's, I, I don't think, just because we have written pool houses is a reason to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
And then I, I know there's some other grievances that neighbors have with the property, but they.
They've taken up with the C E O.
Yeah, they're in their own situations. The, the pool house, when approved or disapproved, doesn't help with the smoke, or help with the, if the, um, the, uh, what is it? The shed is within setbacks, those are things that will need to be handled. Those are things that are gonna need to be handled on their own, and I don't think that they help with this one way or the other.
I concur.
I am finding myself a little biased at this point. And, um, I'm not looking at the reality that we are here to give a variance or not give a variance. I wish I didn't hear about the smoke, uh, because I think that would bother me. I'm being very personal about it. I mean, the pool house was an afterthought. I mean, I, I really can't see where the hardship is. I mean, is it a small lot? I, I'm not able to.
For the heart.
I'm not, like, I think, finding this, like, so, another map that I'm finding, the, lack of clarity in where it is, and what it is, and the boundaries of the other, um, houses. Why didn't we get any, I mean, if, if neighbors were complaining to Mr. Lawley about the smoke, if, I don't know what, what is it, like a, a pit that he has? I don't even know what he has. Is it a pit that, that the logs go in, and that's where this smoke is going over to the neighbors?
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with it.
No, I know, no, I know that, but, but what I'm saying is, I'm being a little biased. I'm, I've admitted it. So I think I'm gonna abstain from this, uh, I'm going to.
The problem is, we, we're not in a position to, um, evaluate the validity of, of the complaints. Do they all be perfectly valid, or, or maybe not? And so, yeah, I agree that the picture painted is, uh, you know, gives, gives some concern. And I think that Mr. Lawley is the person with whom that should be pursued, but if we stay just within the particular issue of the, of the pool, it seems to be a reasonable request. You know, as Carl said, we don't wanna have multiple, um, requests just on the back of the one approval, but this one seems reasonable to me. And, and they do, I mean, it does have this two-front lawn.
That's why I was just gonna go around and say.
Problem in the property, so it really just constricts you as far as what you can do.
Yeah, um, I was just gonna go over real quick, um, from my own brain as well, but the property itself does have, uh, two front yards. It has Merwin Brook and has De Arcangelo. So he has two front yards, which, which is a hardship on a property. Yes, there's two easements on the property. There's a common driveway easement on one side of his property, and then this whole back area is a conservation easement, so he squeezed in that way. And then he has the septic system over here, uh, on the property. So there's, I definitely see multiple hardships on the, on the, um, house. And, and that's how I see it. I, I don't have a, I don't have an issue with it at all.
Is everybody getting ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor to approve Z dash twenty-three dash seventy, that's the Ryan Redennis Residence, one De Arcangelo Drive, and that is for a pool house, which is located in the front yard, which is three dot four dot alpha dot three B. Say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay? Nay? The application is approved for two to one. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, sir. Good evening. Okay, old business, there's none. New business, there's none. All right. Oh, yeah. New business, there's some. Twenty twenty-four election of officers. Let's jump right in, start, starting with chairman. I'll take, uh, anybody wanna chime in?
To nominate.
Have a good evening. Good evening, sir. Thank you for your time earlier. Now, I'll take a nomination for chairman for the twenty twenty-four election of officers.
I nominate Alan.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. Oh, went back there.
I said I nominate Alan.
Do I have a second?
I nominate, I nominate, um, who do I nominate? This guy.
Carl.
Mr. Henry?
Carl.
Okay, um, and do we have a second? Can I second myself?
Am I voting in this? It's just regular members.
It's just regular members. I guess you could. You can second yourself, right?
Yes.
Sure, absolutely. Okay. Discussion.
Well, um, I have a lot to say, if I may. Is this an open for those that are here?
No.
He's here, I can't speak. Liam's gonna be here, starting with, no.
I am finding that the amount of time has to be limited at this point. I'm also finding that you are the only one, chairman, Mr. Chairman, that goes out to see the properties. I believe I took a course where they said we should all be going at one time, and not saying anything. Am I correct?
Oh, no, I'm just saying I went to both.
Oh, okay, well.
And I also go to properties.
Okay, but you're, you're not saying it. It's always, it's always the chairman. Okay, well then Elijah, all right, or Mr. Briggs, or whomever. I think that if we should all go out to see the property, we should all go as a team, but we can't speak. I mean, I think that's one of the, uh, in the training that I, I heard. It's not one person only going. We should all go and look at the property, schedule it, and that's it. I have a lot, a couple of other issues that I won't disclose, but I think that it's time for a change, and even me, step down as secretary. Maybe someone else would like to do it. And I think Carl would make a very, very good chairman, um, for our next session. And I guess that's all I have left to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Well, um, I, I wouldn't have a problem with either Alan or Carl being the chairperson. I think Carl did a fine job when he was before, and I think Alan's just done a great job. I don't know Carl if he would even wanna be chairman. That's a whole other.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I accept the nomination. I'd be comfortable stepping back.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. You know, I, I think, as I say, both of them, I think, have done a very good job. So it's uncomfortable trying to compare, given that, I guess. You know, I think, uh, I would say I certainly support Alan's, um, reelection. I think, uh, generally, you know, Alan does an extremely thorough job, and, um, you know, doesn't spare any energy or effort to look into the, the particular applications and the, the various regulations that might bear on those applications. You know, sometimes you get a little, you know.
I tried to turn down, I tried to, tried to turn down the questions a little bit.
And, uh, and sometimes you get a little dug in, but, you know, we all have our own ways, I think, so. That doesn't particularly trouble me, as far as that goes. So it would, it would really be just based on, you know, the obvious work you do and, uh, and the effort you put into it. And also, I think, to me, the prevailing, um, goal here is, is to try to accommodate what people want, if we can accommodate it within the terms of the zoning regulations. And I think that's, you know, what you try to do, so. So that would be my view.
For me, I nominated Alan, and I'll be supporting Alan, just because, uh, you know, I've been on the Z B A as an alternate, uh, for a while. And, uh, Alan is definitely long-winded and has his drawings and things like that, but, uh, he's extremely thorough. Just like tonight, he's looking up cases of when they had a variance and things like that, which is even a step above previous, uh, chairman, before, you know, uh, any of us were actually seated on here. So that's impressed me enough to, uh, give him my vote.
You wanna vote?
Sure.
Okay. All those in favor of me being chairman, say aye?
Aye.
All those, I guess that's it.
Oh, you can vote, I guess.
All those in favor of Carl being chairman, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's see the two.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. All right. Nominations for vice chairman. I'm gonna nominate Carl, 'cause I think he's been doing a great job. I'll, I'll nominate Carl.
I'll accept the nomination.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second, I'm thirty.
Do we have any other nominations for vice chairman?
I don't know. I might nominate Elijah if you were, but I don't think he wants.
I would second that. We'll bring it to a vote if you want. All right, um, by acclamation, your vice chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, that's a radical change.
I'd like, I'd like to nominate Mr. Richard Briggs as secretary.
I, I would, uh, have to decline, but thank you for the nomination.
You promise?
Janet, do you not want to be secretary?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Elijah Hewland for secretary. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any other nominations for se- Do we have any other nominations for secretary? Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Hooling.
Voted in by a claimer.
Yes, sir. You are our secretary, thank you very much.
So Mr. Lally, is that the plan?
All right, table items. Informal discussion, review and discussion of possible amendments to, this is one we wanted to wait on until the new members were here. And we discussed, and there you were here. If anybody has any problems with the new calendar, foresee any problems with the new calendar.
I can't foresee. What do you foresee on my twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-four?
There's nothing on July like fifth, right?
No, July first.
How could you do that?
Or, no, July, July seventeen. No, that's the.
July, July first. At least it's before July fourth.
I will not be here with you.
You're not going to be here on that one?
Most likely not, but that shouldn't alter the sk, the calendar though.
Okay. How about you, Elijah?
As far as I know, it will be. Maybe it's that far out.
New calendar looks pretty good to you?
I mean, bar, you know, barring life.
It's always that.
Of course.
Okay, that sounds good. So the new, their new calendar starts. That's good. All right, last informal discussion, Commissioner Training. Commissioner Hooling. I heard you did some training, sir.
I saw you all over it.
I'm not going to mention anything else, but whoever needs to work on it can work on it. I think we have some time. Mr. Lally's got to look up exactly.
I can check with that, yeah, with the.
When exactly you have to have it done by?
Yeah.
We're not sure.
Thought it was the end of this month.
We're not sure if that's for.
We're not sure if it's.
Brand-new elected members, if they have until technically next December, we don't know, or is it due now?
I think because they were alternates, they had to be completed too.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, is there any other informal discussion? Any other informal discussion? I will take a motion to close.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.